Good evening. Is that sound working alright for everyone? Welcome to our new Common Council chambers and it'll be our first night live with the new audio visual. Hopefully, everything goes pretty smooth, but it sounds better already, doesn't it? Let's call the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, October 14th to order and call the roll.
Alderman Stralcek.
Here.
Alderman Tlaco is absent. Alderman Meyer.
Here.
Alderman Hancher.
Here.
Alderman Bach is absent. Alderman Parrish.
Here.
Alderman Bratt.
Here.
Alderman Gebhardt.
Here.
And Mayor Nerven.
Here. Yeah, Alderman Tlaco is here someplace. She was at the committee meeting preceding this meeting. Yeah. So she's around here somewhere. She'll come in shortly. First up, we have approval of the minutes from September 9th.
Second.
Motion in the second on those minutes. Are there any comments, corrections, et cetera? Hearing and seeing none, all of us in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. First, we have one discussion item this evening. Outbrief from our consultant Lakota Group for the Mequon Commons Phase 2 summary. So we're going to get through that. We will have a little bit of time for public comment. I see there's a few people from the public here. And then we're going to bring it back to council and have some discussion. So with that, take it away Lakota Group. You'll need to be near, yeah, one microphone or the other because it won't pick you up if you're not too close. Just cozy up to that and make sure the green light's on and you should be good to go.
Okay, can you hear me? Alright. Great. My name is Morgan Chapman. I'm a senior landscape architect with the Lakota Group. Happy to be here tonight to talk to you all about the Mequon Commons Master Plan. Over the past several months, we've been developing a master plan concept for the Mequon Commons site, which is this area that we are on bordered by Cedarburg, Division Street, and Mequon Road to the south, primarily looking at the open space area behind City Hall north to the library and west to the interurban trail. Tonight, we're going to kind of go over a project overview of where we've been and what we've heard so far. I'll dive into the concepts and we will talk about some of the summary feedback we've heard on the concepts so far and then some decisions and next steps for the plan. So, looking at where we've been so far in our planning process, we started with the engagement phase. Here, we had our project tour and we held listening sessions with various stakeholder groups, developed some key themes and goals moving forward with the project, and had an open house with the community to kind of share some initial concept imagery and get some feedback on how people feel the space is used and how likeable the spaces and how functional they are right now. Moving into and where we are currently in the envision phase, we took all of that feedback back to the table and developed some preliminary concept ideas. We shared those with the community at our second open house workshop in September. And then we're here tonight and we've also had meetings with the steering committee. Ultimately, out of the envision phase, we will refine to a preferred plan and develop more formalized cost estimates to package into our implementation phase in a full master plan vision with phasing and implementation strategies for the plan. So who we talked to? These are all of our main focus group meetings that we held. Everybody, many organizations in Mequon as well as Thiensville and more through the community meetings. Some of the things we heard for focusing our plan were what we wanted to do here was to create a town center. We have this development on the corner of Mequon Road and Cedarburg that's attracting people into the space, but what do we have here to attract families year round? How do we get them to stay? We want this to kind of feel like the living room or the main hub of the community. We really want it to reflect Mequon's identity. So what can this space have that would support that vision? Some things we heard from people are really loving the uses of the library, the park, and the pool approximate to each other, that it's a mom's oasis, but the city needs a pool. So how do we offer something new, something unique that isn't repeating uses that we have in Mequon and Thiensville? And how can we do some of these things in a way that are flexible and scaling up and down for different types of events? So just kind of framing the facts. We know right now the current town center thrives on active recreation and lots of social gathering, though many of the spaces are limited in seasonal use. So the plan should emphasize a more balanced mix of passive and active recreation to serve all residents and foster vibrant restorative experiences year round. So using that kind of framework, we did develop some key themes and guiding principles for our plan. The first being a connected town center, so really promoting walkability and gathering for recreation, bringing in some strong community engagement and ownership in the parks and events. Civic reinvestment, revitalizing in our aging infrastructure, reinvesting in flexible year-round amenities and creating new infrastructure to support that. And then acknowledging, of course, the significance of the baseball field on the site and ensuring that those facilities are adequate for the future. Access to nature, expanding public access to green space and sustainable landscapes was highly forefront in a lot of people's minds and expanding, again, the connectivity to the riverfront trails. As well as, number four, sustainable growth. How can we do this in a way that we are sustainably securing funding through public-private collaboration and maintaining Mequon's character through thoughtful growth? So these are our four guiding principles. Yeah? Oh. Okay. Thank you. Well, not sure if I can. Uh, this... I can't click through the slides on the other screen. That's okay. I think I'm still sharing this screen, though.
Yes.
Okay.
This should be your screen share.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. No, it's okay. Okay. So I just want to also hit on some of the feedback we've heard from the initial feedback. So we, at our first open house, asked people how they used the spaces and also how much they liked them. So on this chart, you're seeing how frequently they used the spaces along the bottom and how much they liked them along the side. So and then we categorized these based on the responses. So high use and high likability was here, the library, the interurban trail, and festivals. Lower use but high likability is in this category, the Riverwalk, City Hall, and the field. And then spaces to imagine, low use, low likability based on what they look like, were the pool and playground. And this was our open house feedback. We did this again at the Red Bud Festival and heard similar results. The interurban trail and festivals being the highest use and highest likability, the library, the Riverwalk, and City Hall falling in lower frequency of use but high likability, and then the field, playground, and pool falling into lower use, lower likability. We also asked people to rate some character images of proposed new uses for the site and we categorized these into different categories, starting with open space elements. So we showed images of native planting, pollinator habitats, the baseball fields, a community green, green infrastructure improvements, formal garden spaces, and passive open spaces. These all rated over 65%, so we categorized them as higher likability uses for open space elements on the site. For the aquatic elements, we again showed a range of images to represent different uses within the aquatic space. So with zero depth entry, shaded picnic areas, lazy river, lap pool, splash pad, and diving boards, all ranked very highly on elements that would like to be included within the aquatic space. We showed a range of building elements for the site. Restrooms, facility, and a mixed-use library were the ones that ranked highest. Public safety building, library and civic offices, City Hall expansion or a new City Hall, all did not rank very highly from our community feedback. And then special amenities, so showing some options for shaded outdoor seating, informal concessions area, updated playgrounds, small stage and pop-up events, movies in the park, and specialty lighting, just some different ideas, different images we showed that people responded very highly to and favor of. So with this input, we took all this data and tried to wrap it into where we were going to bring our concepts into a bold new vision. So we wanted a civic campus that is balanced, welcoming, multi-generational, and grounded in Mequon's identity and knowing these improvements would be discretionary and should be considered over a 30-year time horizon. So in the concepts, I will get to in a minute, but I did want to touch on a couple of options we did consider but did not advance. So the first being removing or rebuilding the library and/or City Hall. Predominantly, we did not see an interest of this, for this, from our community workshop. The support of the community feedback just did not support major removing or rebuilding the library and City Hall. We also had preservation goals of preserving portion of the City Hall for the National Register designation and considering economic use of the funds in a long-range open space master plan, focusing reinvestment on more deferred maintenance and preserving more flexibility for the future, knowing that if we can be strategic about plans, creating more buffer space and not tying too much to the facilities, we have the opportunity to revisit this in the future. But predominantly, we did not hear a lot of support for making major improvements to the building and the library. The second one was locating the public safety building on Mequon's Commons site. Again, we did not hear a lot of interest from the community meetings for placing those facilities on this site. We did hear a lot of conversation and acknowledgement that the limited space there is a priority, but due to the spatial constraints of the site necessary for those operations, we thought that that was an incompatible use with the overall project goals of creating more flexible open space to support varied seasonal outdoor uses. And the third was developing a large-scale water park. Again, wasn't hugely supported by the community feedback. We did show a lot more images in the aquatic enhancements that kind of go down the line in how advanced you could make the aquatic facilities, but beyond the diving boards, the lazy river, and maybe some slides, there wasn't a lot of support for that. We also thought it was a bit of a poor fit with the overall project goals, again, trying to promote flexibility for seasonal varied uses. The other thing we wanted to do tonight is acknowledge Reniki Field in some of these concepts that is relocated, but our goal is really not to erase the field's legacy but to honor it, whether through onsite reinvestment, as we see in a few concepts, or thoughtfully planned alternatives that continue to support baseball programming at a new location. Maintaining baseball onsite does still represent, it is a lower-cost option, but it's not a no-cost option. Achieving compliance would require a full rebuild, but any concepts that include relocation of the field would only proceed with carefully considered alternatives. Another piece that we wanted to consider as we were developing these plans is programming and seasonality. So we wanted to consider how any of these new spaces that we are envisioning can support additional programming and seasonality, knowing that programming would need to come from the city and also maybe community-led activity groups. So we do show an example diagram on one of our concepts for how these spaces can be reimagined for each season. So some of the facilities we'll go through in the concept supporting things like a harvest market in the fall, temporary ice rink in the winter, or outdoor yoga and fitness classes in the spring and summer months. We can show how these new spaces can support these varied seasonal uses. So I'm going to dive right into the concepts here. Concept A is more, with developing these concepts at a master plan level like this, we like to have kind of a range of concepts really that scale from minimum to maximum. So we are seeing in Concept A more of a minimum approach. It upgrades existing features in their current location with modest new improvements. The design respects the current layout but enhances aquatics and baseball in their current footprints and focuses on shared infrastructure and flexible gathering spaces. So we're seeing in this concept, I'll just kind of point out some things. There's a gateway element here and enhanced bleachers for this baseball field. Over to the left, we are seeing practice bullpens. This icon up here represents covered bleachers, all supporting the existing field. And then between the two, the field and the pool, we have J, which is a flexible plaza space. This is envisioned as a brickpaver plaza space that really kind of begins to formalize open, flexible plaza uses, could be used as market space, but really using kind of more of the existing footprint. The aquatics facility is enhanced with a new pool that has zero-depth entry and lap lanes with a larger enhanced shared support building featuring changing rooms, bathroom, storage, and concessions. And then over towards the library in its current location, really upgrading the playground to modern play equipment and tying it into a new feature that would run around the library footprint as a story path garden, featuring native plantings, a dry creek bed, and bioswales to really bring in an educational aspect and utilize some of the lowlands and existing drainage routes onsite. We're also showing a new parking off Division Street. This is consistent in every concept. And we're showing new connections to the interurban trail, these nodes labeled as A. In Concept B1, we're really scaling up to more of a mid-range approach, prioritizing bold reimagining of the aquatics area, introducing an expanded age-inclusive pool facility, and relocating the baseball field in favor of flexible civic spaces for year-round use. There's also a new festival street, which we were noting as a flex plaza in Concept A, that's been more formalized and would improve site circulation. So this element here would be actually a street with parking on it, featuring removable bollards at both ends, so it could be closed down for market events, but those could be open for general site circulation, daily use. This area in the middle is a speed table. We're really trying, you know, not to create like a dragway here, but just bring people through the site and offer more proximate parking to some of these other uses. This area on the right or behind City Hall is open now due to the relocated aquatic uses, so seeing this as an opportunity for a passive intimate gathering lawn with a flexible pavilion and a park support building on the side here, cafe and bathrooms. Again, the aquatics facility being relocated allows us to really expand the footprint and offer a new support building, J, bathrooms, changing rooms, concessions, and then relocating the playground element to be more proximate to the aquatics in this location here. And with that opened up space near the library, just north of this open flex lawn, we have the ability to do some outdoor reading garden and a reading terrace, really tying some uses to the library to activate programming there. The shade structure and that story path garden and native bioswales along the perimeter again. And Concept B2, we are seeing very similar concept but with a few key changes. The park support building is really integrated into the middle of the site here, offering an opportunity for a shaded dining area, BOSK. So this would be a tree-covered area with picnic tables and seating to support, you know, dining opportunities around this cafe building. The playground is relocated closer to its existing location but modernized and built into this play terrace lawn that raises up to the reading terrace here. The festival street is reconfigured in this concept as more of a curved element that would offer head and parking, but again, still bringing in bumpouts to slow traffic down. We don't want people speeding through here, and a speed table in the middle, really promoting circulation through the site, being able to kind of close this whole area down and utilize the intimate gathering lawn and flex pavilion for any larger-scale events. And then aquatics here is kind of envisioned in its maximum approach with lazy river and multi-age, zero-depth entry pool element here, as well as a smaller water play space within the aquatics footprint. Concept C1 kind of envisions a more of a community-focused gathering space. So it is, it's featuring a larger amphitheater element here, replacing the baseball field, which is relocated offsite with a larger flex lawn and opportunities for additional garden gathering spaces. This concept also re-envisioned aquatics in its existing location but maximizes the footprint. We're seeing that festival street is reduced to just a pedestrian promenade that brings you kind of through this main spine and really allows us to maximize space for both of these program uses. It also relocates the playground to just behind City Hall here, nearer to this native picnic garden, opening up space here for a shaded community green, which is similar to the BOSK element with trees and shaded structure, opportunities for lawn games, and again, kind of building up this native story path garden around the library. And this aquatics features a much larger support building here and some flexible plaza space uses on either side, as well as cabanas in the corner. And in Concept C2, we're seeing a very similar concept but rotating the aquatic uses so that the building from Cedarburg, just trying to see what this might offer us in terms of separation of the aquatic uses from Cedarburg Road, relocating the playground back towards the library space and just opening up these greens for more flexible passive recreation. Concept D, our last concept, really leans into baseball and fully reinvests in reconfiguring the field and modernizing it with all of the new amenities. So we are seeing an artificial field with fencing all around and multi-use field striping. This is an idea we threw out and we'll see how that received feedback. And then creating more baseball facility uses up at the top of the hill here with a baseball support building and covered seating bleachers. We are able to accommodate a community gathering space behind City Hall here with a shaded picnic area and smaller interactive water feature, but the pool use is no longer onsite. The playground element is reimagined closer to the library as more of a nature-based play experience that would tie into the dry creek bed and native garden area, story path garden. So with these concepts, we identified some very preliminary, high-level cost estimates just to kind of get a sense of where these may land, should you consider reinvesting in each one of these as it is currently laid out. But with these numbers, we did want to acknowledge a few assumptions and unknowns. The program verification, so the final mix, size, and scope of the proposed uses is still in flux and undetermined. The field conditions, soils, drainage, and grading all needs to be considered in these costs. Utilities and infrastructure, the location and capacity of existing systems all needs to be studied. Material and design selections, so finishes and quality levels are still not determined, but for the purposes of these numbers, we did consider higher-quality materials. And then phasing and implementation. So when these elements would be constructed, may vary based on how we develop the phasing and implementation strategy. and implementation strategies for the preferred concept. So construction sequencing, inflation, and market conditions over time all would affect these numbers. But Concept A at a low end, and again, these are very much sliding scale at this point, based on what we may or may not want to include in the preferred vision, but Concept A on the low end, 9.8; on the high end, 11.9; Concept B1, 14.3 million; on the high end, 18.3. B2 steps up a little bit as well with the max aquatic use, 18.3; on the low end, highs, 21.7; C1 around 16.9 on the low end, 20.4 on the high; and C2 is 15.8 on the low end, 19.4 on the high; and then Concept D, 5 million, 5 to 6, 5.25 here. And we do have more detailed breakdown of that in the appendix. But I do want to get into just some of the feedback we've heard on the concepts so far. So who we have talked to with these concepts? We first brought the concepts to the staff and steering committee. We then brought them to the open house workshop. We also, after the workshop, provided an online survey for people to comment on the concepts, and now we're here at the Commons Council. So at the city staff and steering committee meetings, we heard a favorite, a preference for the concepts that promoted flexible mixed-use support for year-round activation, multi-generational spaces, and long-term adaptability. All of that is also consistent with long-range planning practices and our key themes and goals identified at the start of the project. At our community open house workshop, we also heard a preference for the concepts that prioritized open space variety. We heard a lot of support for the varied aquatics scales shown, the event spaces created, and the opportunities for seasonality, and also the flexibility and diverse programming was a topic of discussion. So it's interesting to see that at the community open, sorry, the online workshop, we heard an opposite feedback. We heard more favor for preserving Reneki Field, more preference for the aquatics and playground and festival uses. We also heard some concerns about how much things would cost and some redundancies in elements already existing in Mequon or Theanesville. And now we're to be D on what you all think. But some of the feedback we heard firsthand at the open house, we did want to share. Our conversations really centered around people being excited about the enhancements and looking for opportunities for year-round uses and gathering spaces. People said they could picture these building, these concepts building a really strong community base in Mequon. People really did want to know if baseball gets moved, where is it going? What are the options? But others acknowledged that if the baseball field were to be relocated, what could we do? How could we utilize all of the common space for everyone to enjoy? And really saw some opportunities with the concepts to promote the pool and playground uses. Those were top priorities for many people that we spoke to, and some acknowledging of Concepts B and C, creating more inclusive space for the larger population. We also heard a big push for more connection to the interurban trail and considerations for how vendors could serve trail users, so more consideration for impacts along the Laying out how these preferences, these preferences in a graph, we did want to show. The red indicates the in-person participant preferences, so we tallied up all the results from the paper surveys that we gave people at the open house, and people were leaning towards Concept C2, and then kind of ranging down from there, C2 being their preferred, C1, and then B2, and then B1, and then A and D on the low end. The virtual feedback, again, kind of shows the opposite, more preference for Concept A, and then Concept C's trailing behind, and B's, again, behind that. And both instances, D was the least preferred. We also wanted to give some feedback on how the open space element character images were responded to this round, so we provided, again, visual preference data for people to respond to on what these different elements could look like, and the dot exercises yielded this result. So the lawn and amphitheater, the lawn amphitheater was a very highly favorable element, the festival street, the flexible lawns, the community green, the flexible plaza, and the multi-use field kind of scaling down from there. The programmed landscapes that we shared, dry creek and native swale along that area near the library, boardwalk paths, the nature trail, rain gardens, the secret garden, a pollinator garden, all scored fairly well. Specialty spaces that we created in some of the concepts, the native picnic gardens seen in Seas 1 and 2, nature-based play, enhanced play, modernized play, a bosque element, the story path garden, and the Shakespeare garden. This is how they ranked. The native picnic garden, nature play, enhanced play, and bosques elements being the highest favored. And the placemaking elements we shared, so the benches and rest areas along the interurban trail, the bike path nodes, very highly favored, the wayfinding signage, movable seating kind of in the middle, and the gateway elements and interpretive art, less favored. And the aquatic elements, zero-depth entry, water play, the diving boards were a higher priority, the lazy river in this round, interactive water features and pool cabanas kind of trailing We did ask about the buildings and structures for each concept, so shade structures, everybody wants shade, support concessions and restroom buildings. People scored very highly of the flexible stage option, very, very favorable. Shade sales, vendor kiosks, less so, and the press box bleachers really didn't, were not, there were no responses. Seasonal activities. So we did show a board that indicated different seasonal activities and opportunities for fall, winter, and spring. So some of the elements that scored very highly in the fall were the harvest market and a community bulb planting. In the winter, snow or ice sculptures and the seasonal fire pits. And then in the spring, a flower and plant swap or sale and the kite festival. And again, that is shown how it could be laid out in our B1 concept, but we would do this for any concept moving forward. We could, we could lay out the seasonal activation and market events, things like So decisions and next steps. Hopefully with your input tonight, we will advance to the implementation stage and refine to a single concept plan, complete a more refined cost estimate, and develop the full master plan report detailing the full process, a phasing and implementation strategy, and produce any key visuals to further illustrate the preferred plan vision. And with that, I will say thank you and ask for any questions.
Well, thank you. I think before we get to questions, we'll entertain a little public input. Certainly want to leave some time for that, and then we'll try to preserve a half-hour chunk of time at the end for the council to banter about. Who here wishes to speak? Two people, okay, so well, two or three? Well, have you come up to the podium? State your name and address for the record, and then time limit would be five minutes? Well, we should be able to get you all in.
My name is Scott Reneki, Euphorian resident. I represent the Reneki family. First of all, I'd like to thank the council, the mayor, and the whole room. A lot of things have gone into this process and the planning. They posted any feature like this is amazing. Many respekts on the park support were, at that time, negotiating with the Urban Park into that fashion, and those comparisons are so much smarter than that.
Thank you.
And anybody that knows the Renekis, we'll talk all night, so you'll limit this as much as I can. But no, I do appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight on behalf of the Reneki family. I got to admit, I have a bias in that. I've told a lot of people and obviously would like the ball field to stay in its current location. However, that, I got to make it clear, it's not about the name. And the legacy and the heritage, and the mayor, and it's shown in the reports and speaking with Lakota Group, I think they're well aware of what we've been blessed to have in this neighborhood. My dad, ironically, tomorrow would be his 95th birthday, and I got to reflect on what he would say or do, because I can remember as a little kid being on that field, as an adult and watching kids and who knows grandkids someday. The legacy aspect, the heritage, we've been blessed for 45 years to have that field called Reneki Field. My dad was very honored, and he continues to be honored by that fact, and we as a family do. I've spent, spent the time talking with my brothers and sister, and we certainly do not want to stand in the way of what the council would decide as far as progress. Again, love the field where it's at, but certainly a field of similar or better quality and elsewhere, if it has to be, we're not going to say no, you know, and that would be presumptuous on our part. We appreciate the opportunity to have had that legacy there. Certainly, as I look forward to this process being laid out further, there's no easy decisions when something impacts the entire community. I know my dad loved this community and gave up many opportunities for advancement in other places. Matter of fact, one time he was told he couldn't be the baseball coach if he continued as administrator at the high school. I don't know if it's Doc Campbell, but whoever the superintendent was, he said at the time, "Well, I guess I want to apply then as an English teacher for Homestead High School." You know, it was a beautiful farm community, and we've grown so much. You know, the fact that this community offers so many things for so many people is evidenced by the growth and the improvements that might be forthcoming, Mequon Commons Master Plan. We are thrilled to have the opportunity to speak on behalf of the field. We'll be thrilled with the decision that's forthcoming. And I guess I would leave it at that and just say thank you. I appreciate the time, and we as a family really are grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm not sure who's next, but come right on up.
Hi, thank you. I'm Jennifer Worth. I am the board president of the Theanesville Mequon Youth Baseball Association, otherwise known as TIMBA, historically known as TIMBA. 2025 marks our 75-year anniversary of celebrating youth baseball and softball in Mequon and Theanesville. So excited to kind of plug that as well. As Scott said, we appreciate all the work that has gone into these concepts and for allowing us all to have a voice in this. I'm here to, not to create a stir or participate in any divisiveness, so I want to be clear about that, or to appear to be against the city of Mequon, or the staff, or the council, or potentially the high school, or the Lakota Group. We're definitely here to listen and learn and appreciate the process that's in front of us, appreciate the history, and support Reneki Field, and preferably to keep it where it is. As president of the TIMBA organization, we have over 400 kids every year in our two organizations of Mequon, Theanesville Little League, and Mequon Heat. So I'm here to be a voice for the future of the ball players and community supporters of the baseball community. So with that, I just wanted to, I did send an email today to several aldermen. Just thought I would go through those really quick and comment on some of the things that you'll see or that were in the agenda packet. So some questions or comments that the council could ask or discuss that would be appreciated are, Reneki Field was one of the highest priority areas for transformation, as was mentioned, of open house number one, suggesting to make better use of the space we have. So I think for the majority of the people that have reached out to me and what I'm here to represent, that is what we are looking for, is to make better use of the spaces that we have, and this was suggested on packet page number seven. Reneki Field area is also included in the National Register of the Historic Places and should be treated as such. Unfortunately, I don't believe this was identified in the packet, packet page eight, so I would appreciate a little bit more insight or feedback on that. Relocation of Reneki Field, no relocation suggestions have been publicly offered, but the memo describes them as being identified, so I would just ask that these identified alternatives be made public, again, on packet page eight. WIA regulations only apply to the high school users of this baseball field. There are many other users of the field that do not follow these regulations, but no other user groups were mentioned besides the WIA, which would refer to the high school. So again, on packet page eight. The memo also does not describe what the field would need in order to meet the WIA High School playoff regulations, same reference, page reference. A full rebuild of Reneki Field and/or relocation will more than likely require private funding. So I just wanted to mention a reminder that the way the field is today and all the improvements that have been made to date have been in partnership with the city of Mequon, but much of it, if not all of it, was privately funded. So I just wanted to mention that. Open house number two, what was the attendance of this event compared to open house number one? They were at different venues. The first venue was a little bit more passive, where you could get a lot more public pass through, people coming, looking at the concept designs. In the second open house was at a smaller venue in a different location. And what are the demographics of those people who were in attendance at both of those open houses? I would suggest that those in attendance, from what I saw, I did attend both of them, was likely an older age group demographic at the open houses. But for the online survey, which I do very much appreciate that that was offered to the community, a little bit more runway on that would have been nice to get the word out a little bit longer in advance, but I would say that young families, including the ones in our organizations, prefer this option of being able to provide their feedback online via online surveys and things like that. Families have very busy schedules. We had a few ball players in the room tonight. We tried to get more, but busy schedules and the Brewers, I think, kind of changed people's plans, so go Brewers. But families do have busy schedules, so it would be definitely difficult for them to take the time to come to the open houses that were offered, although that is very much appreciated, with the young kids in tow. So I would also like to understand what the demographics were of those who took the survey. I would imagine that they were probably most likely a lot of young families with children in the household. These are the future users of the ball fields, and all of these concept plan designs are a better way to reach this age group for feedback. So this also shows, when you look at the open houses versus the online survey, in my opinion, I think that this shows a generational difference in how people-
Just to note, we've, we're at the five-minute and 30-second mark.
Okay, no problem. I'm almost done. So again, I guess just to wrap up, we would ask that you could strongly consider asking these questions, having further discussions, maybe putting some decision-making on hold, but if we have to choose a concept, we would ask that you strongly consider Concept A for what was presented. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And our last gentleman, come on up.
Hi, my name is Greg Ebert. I'm the manager of Theanesville Mequon Twins Baseball Club. My first, my senior year at Homestead was Coach Reneki's first year with the varsity team, and then I joined Theanesville Mequon Twins next year and been a player and manager ever since. My concern- My concern is financial. In the past, there hasn't been money for the ball field. It was raised for the lights that currently exist. That was raised by former Homestead coach Ernie Millard. And then several years ago, Dave Wade had a group raise a lot of money to put in the backstop that currently exists, the dugouts, some other upgrades, and Capco Corporation donated the scoreboard. So I guess in the past, there's never been money for the field and just wondering where all that money would come from this time. So I would like to see Renneke Field exist the way it is now with some upgrades. There's no concession stand there. And if there's a new field, where's that financial support going to come from? Thank you.
Thank you. I see another person wishing to speak. Come on up, sir. State your name and-
Hi, my name is Cyrus Swanche. I live at 8402 West Telvia Drive. I'm part of troop 865. If the baseball field gets moved, about how long will it take to get back up and running and where will it be located?
That's more of a question. We'll get to, we'll get to questions in a minute when we close public comment. Thank you. Are there any other individuals who wish to speak this evening? Seeing none, we'll turn it back over to council now. And let me just start by, you know, reinforcing the fact that we're building a plan for what we'd like this, to see this look like in the long run, 20- to 30-year plan, as Lakota group pointed out, nothing's going to transform overnight. And certainly, if something is impacting the baseball field, our intent would certainly not to interrupt service at all. That is something we cannot do. It's the high school's field, home field. We can't put them in a bind. So we're here to create a plan for the future and depending on where the plan goes, a certain set of logistics will need to be laid out to accomplish the plan. So we're not going to leave anyone in the lurch looking. Another point I'd like to bring forward, and I think it's worth reminding the council, we had a strategic planning workshop, it's probably about a year and a half ago now, where we agreed to in principle about maintaining a pool on the civic campus in some way, shape or form. The good news from the study done by Lakota group is that that can be accomplished in most of the plans. And the number we had plugged into long-range financial plans roughly fits the number they came up with for a cost to construct. So we haven't, we haven't changed any of the fundamental decision-making points with regard to the pool. So I think for this evening, okay, okay, sure. We should have a discussion, try and focus some of the, focus down some of the plans. We've got five or six different ones, if you count all the subversions out there. Narrow the focus of it and see where this goes. I don't think we should maybe get into long-range logistics or costs so much, although cost is always a factor. Nothing's going to happen, not all of it will happen in a year, so that creates time to figure those things out. And a note from Administrator Jones asks, Kim, do you have anything you'd like to add before we dive into the discussion?
Maybe I would just add right now that- Oh, thank you. Maybe I would just add right now that there are some additional internal processes that would also come next. We would report out to the Park and Open Space Committee next. We know that the Bike Way Committee is also interested in having some input on the refinement of the plans that we may have as an outcome tonight. And then we do plan to return and use both the Park and Open Space Committee as well as the internal steering committee to vet all of these questions or issues out before returning to the council with the master plan.
And I'll acknowledge the question from our resident Boy Scout, Eagle Scout, so stick with it. Give a little plug for you there. There's a question of if the field ended up moving, where would it go? There's been allusion to the fact that we, allusion to the fact that we've discussed this and it, there have been some very high-level discussions with other stakeholders, primarily being the school and Theanesville and others interested in baseball. Obviously, no decisions have been made because we haven't made a decision whether it needs to move or not, and maybe we'll get closer to that this evening. So we've laid the groundwork and talked to some of those players. Obviously, whether it, if it has to move, that kicks off a whole other series of events. If it doesn't, then we don't need to go down that road anymore. So that's why there hasn't been any finality on where it would go, because we haven't decided that it needs to go yet or when. So I think that addresses most of the high-level questions hanging out there in the balance. And with that, we should get to council with, oh, we've got a solid 34 minutes to discuss this. So with that, open it up for questions and comments from the council. Don't all go at once. Alderman Stolczek, would you like to go?
Yeah, that way I don't interrupt because I know there's no option to, I don't see an option to raise a hand, so thank you for the opportunity. Can you hear me?
Yes, we'll have to find a way to get you bumped up in the council chambers here. But I can hear you, but maybe not super clear.
I'll get uncomfortably close, as you say, to the microphone on my laptop. You know, I'd like to start out by thanking the Lakota group. You know, there were talking points that I wanted to make sure that were covered, you know, really based on, you know, interactivity on the plan, community feedback, respecting several different groups and having options for, you know, multi-use capabilities. And I don't have any to add to what they put in. You know, the only question I think that was left as we talked about water features, one of the discussion items was lap swimming early on, but that didn't come up later. So curious to see where that sits moving forward as a, you know, as a parting question, you know, based on my comments here in a little bit. I wanted to thank, you know, the people that came and spoke in favor of Renneke Field, especially the Renneke family representative. You know, I too am a Homestead alum. I too am aware of the tradition and the importance of making sure that, you know, legacy is considered, respected, you know, at times when we're talking about, you know, moving things in potentially a different direction. You know, I think, I was, I'm just very thankful for the respectful commentary and feedback that we received from that group. You know, I too would like to make sure that if we would move that at some point, that we, you know, take the time to make sure that, you know, if it's on city property versus school property, that we take the time to make sure that facility is a nice, you know, facility as well as, you know, potentially an upgrade either here or some other space. With that being said, I think I'm just going to give my feedback right away. You know, I tended to like, you know, Concepts B2 and C1, which didn't include the ball field. After listening to the public feedback on that space, you know, I guess I'd really like to hear some council discussion around the space of, you know, if we do go, you know, with like an amphitheater-type, you know, theme in that space. You know, the biggest concern with the ball field is it's potentially only used for a couple of months out of the year, and I don't want to see a lesser use with amphitheater and some of the other things. So just a little feedback on, you know, where the council feels on that, how that fits in with the public, you know, if we do decide to go away from that. But definitely would entertain keeping the ball field there. You know, again, my biggest focus, as I've always said, has been the pool. I like the pool. I support the lazy river. I just have concern, as a former lifeguard, lifeguard training instructor and, you know, swimmer of, you know, 15 years, I just don't know that the lazy pool is going to get the overall usage over time. I think it's going to be a cool, exciting feature that'll bring people to the facility. But the usage versus the regular pool, I just don't know that that extra portion or even that, that specific use is potentially worth the investment for the council to entertain tonight. So with that, I'll yield my time and I thank everybody for listening and patience with me as I'm on a business trip and had to attend remote this trip, so thank you.
Certainly appreciate your effort to join even remotely. Alderman Parrish.
Thank you. Want to begin by recognizing the city development staff and Lakota group for their work on this process. You have engaged with residents and community organizations and stakeholders, and I do feel you made this an open and transparent effort, so thank you very much. And I look forward to sharing my evolving vision and hearing more of yours over the coming months. I do feel we should design the site to serve a variety of community needs, not just one purpose. If any use limits year-round access or flexibility, we should consider relocating it. My preference is to keep the baseball field in Concept A as Renneke Park or Renneke Field and Amphitheater, just to drop some names early in the process here, provided it can truly function as a shared space for other community activities when baseball games are not being played. If that shared use is impossible, then relocation may be necessary. We should explore concepts like removable fencing, reinforced natural or synthetic turf, and modular features such as portable mounds and bases. The outfield grading and surface can be built with a subsurface drainage and root zone system that can handle foot traffic, tents, and staging loads for concerts in the park or festivals. Baseball fences and bullpens can be portable or retractable, particularly in the outfield, to allow open access for other events. Portable or retractable bleachers can also be used, giving the flexibility to reconfigure the space depending on the activity, whether it be baseball game, concert, or other event. I would like to see a permanent stage in amphitheater facing the field near where the playground is currently proposed. A permanent stage would add real value by bringing community events such as memorial and Veterans Day ceremonies and concerts into the park rather than holding them on the rusty front steps of this city hall. And I say that tongue-in-cheek. We currently do a lot of that on our rusty front steps, so it'd be nice to have a more respectable place for that. We spent $4,000 on the stage setup for Taste of Mequon this year alone and possibly more for the winter and Rosebud festivals, so having a stage could be an investment that pays for itself over time. The stage could host concerts, outdoor movie nights, bike ride and walk kickoff's in association with the Interurban Trail, and programs led by the MTSD Recreation Department and local arts groups, which provide a great venue and possibly another source of park fee income. In the winter, the space should remain inviting and lively, and I believe the alternative winter concepts shown by Lakota's group are wonderful, including the fire pit. I believe it is important to plan for a year-round concession area for food, event registrations, and heated restrooms in the bathhouse, year-round, that can be used certain times in the winter. The council has already expressed support for replacing the pool, so that improvement should move forward as a central feature of the project as soon as possible for Phase One implementation. If possible, I would like to make the pool even larger than shown in Concept A and include more of the amenities from the survey. I appreciate the idea of storybook gardens and winding paths and the learning areas near the library, which make the area inviting and walkable. A playground may also make sense closer to the library. Throughout the entire site, I envision a lighting system that is programmable, energy-efficient and modern, that illuminates key features and activates paths in darker areas in the evening and during the winter months. This type of lighting would enhance safety, extend usability into the evening hours, and bring the space to life year-round. We should also design and budget for safety elements such as concrete bollards to manage traffic and attractive fencing around the playground, pool, and parking lot and outfield perimeters. In conclusion, I believe we should return to the drawing board and explore how elements of Concept C can be merged into Concept A. We need a clearer and more detailed budget, including soft costs and supporting components such as sound and lighting. And I would also like to understand how this project could be completed in two phases, allowing the new pool to open in 2027 while we raise funds and implement Phase Two whenever that may happen. Thank you for listening and I look forward to hearing all of your thoughts as well.
Any other comments from the council? Alderman Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the major things that we have to look at is the fact that our pool is disintegrating, dying, and we need to get that replaced. The pool has come up before the common council and we discussed, it's a priority that we need to have that done. So some of these concepts inside here, well, the lazy river and stuff like that is really kind of neat. I think our priority should be on, you know, the different concepts that prioritizes the pool and the availability of being able to do that first and get that done and incorporate the rest of the-
But I really supported C1 and C2. Unfortunately, Renneke Field, but my support for C1 and C2 wanes when- Or something that, that we can pretty, heard that we'll be able to relocate that there and be able to do that with the blessing and that of the different organizations that have supported Renneke Field for all the years and that have used it. One of the things that we also need to do is I think the, and if I'm taking a look correctly on here, Sketch A for the-
Would probably be able to be done, but still having Renneke Field there, if that's a possibility. And then going down the road with some other features and one of the last feature then is trying to, trying to work Renneke Field into a new area. So we could still, I think we're using some of these features and still doing it in a combination of like C1, C2, and using the pool configuration from A, we could then still keep Renneke Field there for a longer period of time until we for sure have a spot for them to move. So if there was a vote right now, I'd say C1, C2, using the pool configuration in Sketch A.
Alderman Hatcher.
By looking off through the different elements of the different designs, I wanted to think about what would be the most feasible for the community to get the most use out of. I have, my kids went through Timba and my son was on Homestead baseball, so I'm definitely a baseball fan. But going along with Alderman Meyer, I would, I, my top choice would be C2 because of the fact that incorporates a lot of different activities that the community can be engaged with. And I also look at other communities that have done the same thing. I taught in Wauwatosa. Wauwatosa refigured Hart Park with an amphitheater similar to this and playground, and they have concerts there once a week during the summertime, and it's just, it's attended widely throughout the city, not just the city, but around the community. And they have food trucks there and they have, you know, so it was, it was a really, it really enhanced the community there. So I look at how successful that was and how this could be similar to that, where they could really bring the community together with concerts and events, and I'm thinking about all the festivals that we have that would make it easier. I listened to Alderman Parrish's talking about having a flexible field, which is an interesting concept. The only thing that I have a concern about would be that that would take a lot of manpower to always reconfigure the space instead of having one permanent space. I'm thinking about Public Works trying to meet the needs of all that. But it's, I thought it was an interesting idea. So if I were to pick my choice right now, it would be C2 because of the flexibility and because of the fact that I think it would be a draw for everybody in the community. for everybody in the community. And, and along with Alderman Meyer, making sure that there's a baseball field location that would be amenable for the, for all the activities. And I don't look at it necessarily as a bad thing. It could be a start of a new, a, a new tradition, a new legacy that you could, you can tailor the baseball diamond, the baseball field into something that would be special too. So, change is not always the worst thing. It could be where this could be something that would be enhanced and also make it, you know, a legacy event too. Thank you.
Thank you. I, before we move on to anyone else, I did collect a few comments from Alderman Bach, who regrettably can't be here because he's at Am Fam Field right now. And I won't read it all because it's voluminous and, but I'll paraphrase just to get the gist of it. And I provided this to Kim earlier so she can have it. It'll be part of the record of the meeting and such. First off, he apologizes for not being able to be here tonight. He says he's always been a huge baseball fan, that he coached Heat and Timba for many years and continues to support both community programs. Says he's had, had fond memories of picking up a Chuck's Place pizza and heading over to Reniki Field to watch some baseball in the summertime. So, he says he does understand why the topic of Reniki Field brings up so many emotions, but he goes on to say that change can bring new opportunity as well. He believes that the Reniki Field should be located somewhere in Mequon, but questions where the best places. Goes on to say that he believes that fields should be turf, and I know, given the condition of the backlot here, there's some, some question about whether turf is feasible or not in its current location. He believes that Homestead should be a key decision-maker in this process, as they are one of the primary users of the field. That's where the WIAA field configuration concerns come into play and the inability to host playoff games. He goes on to kind of wrap up saying he, he thinks that this could be a new opportunity for youth baseball, maybe resulting in a high-quality turf field somewhere else in the, in the area, whether it be a city property or maybe a school property, maybe even a, a baseball plex that could be conducive to hosting tournaments, which was always, continues to be a challenge. There's not enough fields to really host a proper tournament because we're, facilities are so spread out all over the city. So, that's the short version. If you want the long version, we can certainly provide it. It's part of a public record now. So, that was Alderman Bach's feedback. Moving on to anyone else who'd like to speak. Alderman Bratt?
Thank you, and thanks everyone for coming here tonight, and then thanks for the hard work on this project. So, you know, I look at these plans. Sorry if you hear me not. Anyway, I look at these plans, and, you know, you know, we're taught in planning school to dream big, but then reality has a way of creeping in. So, I like the range of these plans here. We have all the way from A to D. When I look at this, a few things come to mind. First, I think we need to think of the concepts that we have here, some of the other smaller pieces. You know, I'm, I work in parks every day. I think I hit A today. I am not a fan of municipally-run lazy rivers. They are a maintenance headache. They tend to fail. They're custom-designed, so whenever you're looking for parts, it's a custom order. So, I worry about our capacity as a community. So, otherwise, I really like to be. But lazy rivers, I would say if you want a lazy river, the Wisconsin Dells is calling you, as it calls my children. As far as the playground goes, I really strongly support keeping it near the library. It's tied in closely where the activity's there, you know, the ease of parents, i.e. me, as well, just letting your kid be on the playground in a nearby area. So, I think that really ties in some of the concepts, you know, some of like B1 and C1 are somewhat of a challenge. I really appreciate Option C2 as a change agent, if we're going to go big on the cost. I think it gives us a lot of what we were getting requests from in terms of feedback for a pool that has a lot of versatility, you know, a lot of variety of spaces. I do like the way that there's the privacy from the road front for the pool users. Just provides a nice sort of demarcation of public space from the road. I also really appreciate the open lawn concept as well. And at the same time, I'm also really appreciative of the legacy that this field has in our community. You know, so I'm not necessarily against Concept A either. I just think our council, we, we need to narrow things down to C2, and A would be the two that I would want standing. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Tlaco?
So, there's an emotional aspect, and then there's like the, not emotional aspect. And redesigning this area for the next 20, 30, 40 years, I, at first was like, why would we move Reniki Park? Like, what a horrible idea. Absolutely not. And as I started to think about it, we built this big town center, and we have these businesses, and we want to support it, and we want to make sure that this downtown area thrives. And when I really started thinking about it hard, I, Mequon needs, and I think the community desires, a meeting area, an area where families can come, and they can spend the day, and they can go to the pool, and they can go to the library, and they can go to the shops in the downtown. And with that, it kind of narrowed it down to Reniki Park may need to get moved. And I think that's a hard thing because it is a nostalgia. Like, I've, I've been born and raised here. I've seen it, you know, the lights, the whole thing, the whole kit and caboodle. And I, the more I thought about it, I thought, well, what separates Mequon? And Mequon is known for its land and for its parks. And I'm like, I kind of threw the idea around with some other people, and it's like, why don't we have parks of excellence in Mequon? Why don't we have a designated place where you come to play baseball? And why don't we have a designated place where it is our soccer place? Why do our parks have like multiple fields for different things all in one place? Like, is there a way for us to maybe, futurely, do that where we could say, hey, this is the park of Reniki, and it's, you know, where we can host those leagues, and we have the bathroom facilities and, and things along that nature? So, with that being said, I am in favor, as long as that we do make sure that our children can continue to play baseball somewhere and that we do accommodate this in some form of moving Reniki Park. I think a bigger priority currently is the pool. I think that does need to be a main focus as far as the first step in the renovation process. But I also think what we're lacking in all of these designs is a community center. And that was something that the Logoman offered that was a meeting place, that was affordable to our community, to host events, to have place to go and meet. And I don't see that in this downtown civic plan. And so, I'm a little bit disappointed in that because I think we do need to reinvest in a community gathering place that would be able to host people 365 days out of the year. So, I, I would like to see possibly another concept plan drawn up, focused on A, the pool, because that's something that the council has spoken about, that the majority has said, hey, we want to reinvest in that. So, let's start there and see how that pool can fit in that place. But I also think that we need that multi-use building where it's like, we're not redoing a building so that people have a changing room to go to the pool. I think this building has to be a little bit more. I think it needs to have a place that is a community center-type deal like we had at the Logoman, that we could host eighth-grade dances, or driver ed classes, or knitting club, or whatever it may be that's right there, bringing people into the heart of our community. Additionally, you know, I would like to see Mequon be able to host or entertain more in the center. So, I would like to see an area where we would have food trucks stalls or something also, because an amphitheater alone, we have other things. So, it's a beautiful plan on the north side of the library with the swales and stuff. That's like a beautiful place to have a nature garden and have that piece of nature. And I also want to make sure that we're cognizant that we don't overbuild this area either with too much buildings. The Mequon survey continues to say over and over again, like, we want our land, we want the green space, we want Mother Nature. So, I think we have a huge opportunity to start maybe hosting a co-farmers market in this area. It's right off the inner urban. It's highly used with children that are biking. If you're downtown throughout all summer, you can, you see that. It is a mom's oasis with the library, having that small playground. But also, I think our focus does need to be the pool and more of a multi-use building on that site that can host unlimited green space. But also, I would like a little bit more information about why is Reniki Field not regulation? If we flipped it in the other direction where the community center used to be and have it go out, like going north, would that be a possibility to keep it or make it multi-use? So, I'd like a little bit more information in that regard. But I don't, with all the concept plans, they all have really one good, they have like multiple good pieces throughout, but I don't think that any of them fully utilize this area to its fullest potential. And I think we need to go back to the drawing board a little bit still and make sure that we've kind of made sure, like, does Reniki Park for sure need to go somewhere else? I just feel like there's a little bit more tweaking that needs to get done in order to make sure that we're moving in the best direction, you know, for the next 10, 15, 20 years.
Thank you. Alderman Gebhardt?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of follow-up points. Certainly, certainly respect everybody's opinion and the feedback that's given here. I, I don't have much more to add. Just kind of want to tell you how I'm thinking about it to maybe reinforce a few points that have already been talked about. There's a lot of pieces and parts that I like in the different plans. The pieces in particular, certainly the concessions, the bathrooms, the seating area, the pool area. The, the one area that I struggle with or that I would like to see as part of the master plan moving forward is that more of that year-round gathering space. And given the limited space in this area, that, that's a bit of a conflict, right? We'd like to have it all, but I think the reality is that that just isn't going to be possible, given the limitations on the space requirements. And so, from where I sit, as much as I like the baseball field and respect the, you know, the legacy of it there, I do think this could be an opportunity for a fresh start somewhere else. But I'm, I'm thinking it more in terms of priorities and thinking of it in terms of the priority for the community. In terms of a central gathering area, I think that that, that area for that field could be better utilized as a central gathering area for festivals and year-round sort of activities that could really go ahead and bring the community together. And for that reason, that's why I would be in favor in exploring moving the baseball field to another area. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I'm the only one who hasn't spoken yet. And we started this out, one of the, one of the goals was trying to, trying to activate this space more of the year. You know, we've, we've built a town center around it, and with it's brought a number of people who walk through this area and try to use it. I'll, I'll admit, one of the things that frustrates me when I walk out of the back of City Hall to my car on a Tuesday at noon is frequently see people walking their dogs in the cemetery to relieve them in the cemetery. It's hard to watch. It's, it really, really is, but there's no other space for them. And that we've, we've got to, we've got to do something different where the space is more accessible for more of the community, more of the year. I, I think what I've heard here this evening, there's a little bit of mixed feelings on, on the, on the ballfield from a couple. But one thing I think we can agree to is that the pool is a priority. We've been lucky to make it last this long. I'm actually shocked. I think we've been talking about need to replace the pool for all 14 years I've had some sort of position in government. With that, there seems to be some coalescing of support around a C2. I, I think the, the good thing about that is, is it allow, would allow us to attack the urgent need of the pool while we figure out the other space. I mean, it wouldn't, wouldn't need to impact anything that's going on in the rest of the, the campus. And certainly, we won't be able to appropriate funds for everything all at once, and this will need to be done in stages over time. I'm not sure where everyone else's heads are at on that, but it seems to be like the way to not, to move in that direction that allows us to not have the most complicated logistics thing we need to figure out ever because we can attack the pool, and it gives us time to figure out anything else and, and put in that extra work as a couple aldermen have alluded to. So, with, with that, I'm not going to say much more, other than trying to bring together thoughts and maybe present a path, a path forward that, that allows us to make some progress now while other elements of the civic campus get some additional attention, as was discussed here from some of the aldermen this evening. We certainly don't have to close down conversation if there's other comments. Now is the time to have them. Alderwoman Tlaco?
So, I definitely like the direction of trying to like narrow in on one thing. Looking at the space, the pool where it is, is probably, I think, after kind of playing around, putting it in different places, is the best place position for that? So, whether or not we take on a little additional land to make it larger, I guess would be a question for everyone, right? But I think the pool kind of needs to stay in the same spot. So, that would definitely help move things forward as far as that. But then my only question is, is that, you know, I, I guess I would like to hear from the council, other council members, if they had any desire to do something on the lines of a community center where if we were to build an entrance to the pool on the first floor, that we could maybe put a second floor for some sort of community gathering space that would be a rentable space that we could use year-round, our residents could use year-round. And I'm just curious if anyone had any thoughts on that or was in favor of that as well.
Kim, looks like she has a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. We did, at an internal level, talk about community space, like interior community space for the ability to rent. So, each of the plans do have the opportunity to accommodate that. I'll let Morgan talk a little bit more, just about maybe just a couple examples.
Yeah, I just, I think Kim hit on it. Like, there's a, a building component in almost all the plans. I think we could conceptualize that as a, a community center. So, building upon the uses we state in these, in these diagrams, maybe that increases the space of it a little bit, the footprint. But I do think it's possible and feasible in almost any of these.
Okay, great. And then the only other comment I would say is, when designing the pool, the sun rises in the east and sets in the west. And I just hope that when we're placing the building, that it is not in its current place where it blocks the sun, as that is going to help heat it. So, I hope that we are placing the pool in such a position with the building around it in such a position that we would maximize that lovely warmth that we get for those three months out of the year.
I'll, I'll come back quickly to the, the general concept of a community center we have. We haven't had much discussion, if any, really, about that at council. It'd be hard to unpack all that here this evening. So why don't we capture that thought and carry it forward? I guess with some of the desire to make this space function many, many months of the year, it necessitates some amount of 24/7, 365 building available, you know? If you're going to put out a temporary ice skating rink in the winter, someone's going to need a warm place to change and those types of things. So tacking onto that concept of some sort of community space, whether it's a larger community center or some spaces that can be rented that accomplishes most of the goal, we probably should have a separate discussion on that, although I'm certainly open to it if that's the desire of the council. I won't go on. I did see maybe a hand waving over here.
Yeah, thank you. Yep, good discussion. Community center is interesting to discuss another time. Probably not full-blown Logeman, because then I'd say, why do we tear it down to begin with? That's another discussion. I just, something Alderwoman Tilaco said resonated with me, which was, and maybe the consultant could just quickly touch on this, why can't we rotate the field 180 degrees such that the outfield is closer to the pool and so on? And essentially, home plate would be by the parking lot. So, you know, flip it entirely such that the outfield becomes the green area that we're seeking, and the home plate is closer to the parking lot, such that we have our cake and eat it, too, by keeping everything.
Yeah, so we did explore rotating it, indeed, but keeping the pool. I think we felt that the space we get on the side here is more limited, and we tried to maximize the back stop buffer area that's required.
Is it physically possible to get everything on there, though? If you were to remove the concept of the native picnic garden at the corner and essentially make that your whole home plate area and rotate the field, you can keep the amphitheater where it's shown, by the pool. Just until we see some math and...
Which version are you looking at?
I guess I'm looking at, well, I'm trying to merge concept, still trying to merge concept A with C2. C2 is what I'm looking at.
Well, I think, you know, option D shows you what the full-size compliant. Now, that, you know, there is a space, obviously, to that southwest that includes, you know, the bleachers and the stadium. But you can see that there's, you know, it's really constrained if we replaced that front area along Cedarburg Road for that to be a pool. And there is conflict between the field, especially in the outfield during playtime with the pool. There is already, you know, foul balls that land in the pool. So I think there's some logistical, operational issues that we would have to work out as well, and that may cause some additional infrastructure needs.
Okay. Well, when you're putting a puzzle together, it kind of looks like it's possible, so be interested to see that. Thank you.
Mayor, Rob has his hand up.
Oh, is, sorry, sorry, Rob. I'm not looking at the computer monitor to my left. Go ahead, Alderman Strelcheck.
No problem. I'm doing the analog method of raising my hand for a meeting, so thank you. You know, I do want to comment on, you know, a couple of the other, you know, mixed juice comments that Alderman Parrish and Alderperson Tilaco made. When Logeman went, there was a sense of loss with that building, you know, just, you know, feedback based on what Alderman Parrish shared. That building just seemed like, even if we kept it, we would have needed to repurpose, and the cost to do that would have exceeded just building a new building if the time was appropriate. So definitely something to entertain, you know, as we go through this concept, like what the space would be. We don't have to commit to the building and programming tonight, or even really in the near future. I like the idea of removable fencing, just to see what that would mean from a, you know, staff time to do so. But, you know, keeping Reniki Field where it's at, as well as, you know, having our flexibility for festivals and, you know, potential concerts and/or, you know, things like that in that space would be, you know, fantastic if we could accomplish all in one. So just a little extra look at that, just to try to give, you know, another chance. It seems like we're trending towards the C options, C1 and C2, you know, to keep Reniki Field. I'm also going to just be really bold and share that, you know, the Reniki legacy is important to the city of Macquarie. If it's on city and Macquarie property versus high school property, if it should get moved, you know, I would strongly support and recommend that we try to keep that Reniki name associated with it. Even if we get an additional sponsor, we could add the additional sponsor to the space or whatever. But, you know, that's part of growing up in the community and, you know, sharing, you know, Mr. Reniki's vision of, you know, just baseball and family and, you know, passion for, you know, sports and community. That embodies what we're trying to do here on a council today, and I don't see that trend ever changing from a city council standpoint. So it just would be really good to consider, you know, those few items moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I think we've given staff some decent feedback that they can go back and work with. If there are no other comments, going once, going twice, okay, don't want to cut anyone off. We do have, we'll move on to our last item on the agenda for the informational items. We have planning of the whole, committee of the whole planning calendar. I can actually say that. Committee of the whole planning calendar. I'll make one observation under the theme of new topics for the future. At Appropriations Committee last week, we had a spirited discussion about speed signs. And I know there's been a work item going around the planning calendar for public welfare related to speed bumps. I'm sensing that maybe what we should do at a upcoming committee of the whole is have a nice hour-long, maybe hour-and-a-half-long discussion on speed control in general and looking at it holistically. It touches not only public works, public safety, and certainly the engineering department. And we can have a deeper discussion on how we can attack the problem. I know we all get complaints. I complain about speeding. And that would give us a chance to unpack all the different alternatives, what things work in what conditions, and how we might holistically attack the problem. And then, after some discussion there, maybe kick it back to the committees after that, when we have a consensus. So I certainly appreciate all the focus on that. Public safety is a big part of what we do, but I think we should have a deeper discussion on that. So we're going to add that to the planning calendar for Committee of the Whole coming up here, probably in the early part of 2026. 2025 is winding down the clock pretty quickly. Does anyone else have any other items they'd like to put on the Committee of the Whole Planning Calendar? Hearing and seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Motion in a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. We're going to take a short, I don't know how much time our AV guy needs to get Rob onto the next meeting, but I was asked to provide a short recess between the two meetings, but let's try to cap it at three minutes.